Good?
Yep.
We're good. Are we, are we gonna put it on TV?
He's gonna, he's gonna put it on.
What was that? Okay, we're good then. You can start.
Okay. Uh, good evening. It's February, uh, 2nd, 6:00 PM. I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that it is being televised via, uh, virtual remote meeting, and it's on cable channel 18. I want to thank everybody for their patience ahead of time, still getting used to the format. I'd like to announce that we'll take public comments after this hearing, and there's only one call-in phone line. And that number is 1-508-539-1400, extension 8585. And we're gonna insist on a one, one-minute time limit for each of our call online situation. Couple of things to help us with this meeting and going smoother. Uh, I think it's better to raise your hand to be recognized to speak, and to mute your phone when others are speaking, and to try and keep the background noise. Okay. Sharon Sandler, Mary Ann Ramirez, or Town Hall, all of the board members and applicants, including myself, are joining via Zoom. We're gonna forego the pledge of allegiance because of the COVID-19 situation. Ron Bonvey has recused himself from this hearing, so sitting on this hearing tonight, will be our four regular board members, and again, we're gonna have George Ganzen-Muller on this. So Sharon, would you read the first continued hearing?
950 Falmouth Road, Route 28. Petitioners, Preservation of Affordable Housing LLC, request a comprehensive permit under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40B, 20-23, and 760 CMR 56.00 to construct 39 low-income housing rental units on property located in an R3 zoning district, parcel A, map 93, parcel 6-0, parcel B, map 93, parcel 7-0, and parcel, parcel C, map 94, parcel 7-0, continued from January 27th, 2021 hearing.
Okay, before we get started, I'd like to thank everybody for all the time, effort, and work they've put in to make this go smooth. It's been a long process. This is at least our third meeting, maybe more, and we've hashed out a whole bunch of questions that we've had, got a lot of answers to it, and I think there's not too many left to go through. And we should go through those changes as to what was presented last time, and, um, maybe kind of go over, um, anything that needs to be added. So with that being said, why don't we start with you, Alana, if you would?
Very good, Mr. Chairman.
And bring us up to date as to what changes we've made and what, what outstanding questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all board members for all the hard work you've put into all of this, and to this special meeting in particular, to try to, you know, get this moved along as much as possible. Since the last session, there have been some revisions to the plan, and those revisions have been reviewed by peer review council. And we have also provided a draft decision. We provided that last week. We gave that also to, um, the abutting landowners. Any abutting landowners have been met with by the applicant on a number of occasions to review the issues that were discussed last time, um, by the, um, through the board and the butters and the applicants. So we will talk about that tonight. What we thought, and I also gave a set of, uh, draft motions to the board, for the board to consider this evening in relation to the draft decision, because obviously, even over the last week, some changes have come up. And so what we thought we would do right off of that is to have engineer, uh, Brian Kuchar, review the latest site plan to show what those planned revisions are, so that everyone can visualize what we're, what we'll be talking about tonight. So with that, I'll put it over to Brian.
Thanks, Alana. Um, I'm, I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay? Sure. Can everyone see my screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, since our last meeting, we've been working closely with your peer review consultant, um, Charlie Rowley, to go over some of his comments that we received in a, a letter, uh, January 6th, and there were some follow-up emails back and forth, um, to look at the site design and to address some of the issues, um, that he raised in his, um, review. As part of that review process, we have submitted a revised plan set that's dated, um, February 2021. We've also submitted a revised lighting and photometric plan, um, and we've submitted a draft revised stormwater analysis to Mr. Rowley as well. Um, so what I'd like to do right now is just kind of recap and go over some of the things we talked about during the last meeting that, um, both your peer reviewer and, uh, ZBA members, and yourself, Mr. Chairman, had identified as things to address. Um, so this is the revised site plan, uh, rendering that shows the landscape as well. I first want to draw your attention to the upper-left corner that, um, shows a raised crosswalk, which has now been added to the design. This was to address some of the comments and concerns we heard from our abutting neighbor, uh, South Cape, regarding safety, uh, crossing, um, the extension of Cross Road with both their maintenance and housekeeping staff. This, uh, crosswalk was located directly opposite of the, the housekeeping facilities, based upon, um, our conversations with, uh, South Cape representation. Dave Quinn from the Housing Assistance Corp. met on-site and, and reviewed, um, the location of these, of the, the two areas of concern. The second crosswalk is not a raised crosswalk. We looked at, um, having that raised. It became problematic from, um, a grading standpoint based upon the location of the maintenance facilities, which is right in this area here. So we chose to have, not raise that crosswalk and to have just a standard crosswalk for maintenance staff. We do feel that the raised crosswalk will serve as a speed bump as well. It's essentially a speed hump, and it would slow down traffic that may be leaving the site heading, um, out to, um, Falmouth Road. Uh, the next item that we addressed was buffer screening. We also heard from our butters that there was concerns about, um, the vegetation screening that was left behind, that there isn't really thick understory, and during ma, winter months, um, it might be a little thin. Again, Dave Quinn met on-site, reviewed that with their representation. Um, and we came up with a enhanced planted vegetated buffer along, um, the parking lot area. Again, I want to point out two additional points related to the buffer. Uh, this first building, Building A, is approximately, um, four feet lower in grade, the surrounding building grade, from its closest building on the South Cape, South Cape property, which is up in this area. If there are questions to that, I do have another plan that shows the larger site that we can look at. And we've also, uh, the second building, Building B, is nine feet lower of the, uh, surrounding grade to the closest building, which is up in this location, just north of our site. Our parking lot is also in this location here, in this corner. It's approximately 10 feet lower than the grade surrounding this building. So we think between the screening, um, that's been added, and the grade change, that, um, that does provide a nice buffer between the two properties and, and will provide sufficient screening. The next item that we addressed in our plans was a comment, uh, I believe brought up by the DPW regarding snow storage. We have added, uh, locations within the parking lot. We've pulled the, the landscape trees back from the edge of the islands to create space to allow them to pile snow in these two locations in the upper parking lot. We've also provided a location in the lower lot, um, shown here in the corner of the building. We also have another location here. Again, we've adjusted the tree location to account for that, and additional snow storage down, um, in the, this is the northeast corner or the, um, the lower right of your, of your screen. And lastly, a bumpout was also provided, um, again, at the request of the DPW. So any snow being pushed down the road, there would be sufficient area to pile the snow in that location as well. And we've also accounted for additional snow storage on Lot B, which is across the street, um, and that would allow for access, you know, for big storms that if they needed overflow or needed to move storm, they could also pile it there. Um, the, the next item that we addressed that was discussed during the last meeting was, was the parking. We've added four additional parking spaces. Uh, we've worked very closely with your peer review consultant to come up with what we believe to be, um, a good plan. I, we think it, it, it really works well with the site design. Uh, so eight new spaces here. We've also added one additional space in our lower lot and one additional space in the upper lot. That provides for a total of 10 additional spaces, getting up to 59, which, uh, meets the 1.5 spaces per unit. I also want to note that we did highlight in the plan submitted an area that is to be reserved for, um, parking if, for some reason, this parking, uh, uh, needs to be relocated for any reason. If the road is, is extended, which we believe, um, it won't be, and I think Alana has addressed that in the decision, but we did, um, as, uh, provide a reserved space, um, that thinks that, uh, there will be no structures, uh, placed on. Um, there were some minor drainage modifications that we've addressed as well related to the changes in the parking, mainly due to an increase in impervious cover, so we had to account for that stormwater runoff. So the drainage design has been, um, uh, updated accordingly. Um, I think that covers the main points that we've, uh, addressed based upon our last meeting. If there's any questions, or if by chance I missed something that we talked about, feel free to, to ask those questions, uh, now. Okay, I'm, uh, I'm good with everything. I like what you've done. Um, I'll leave it at that. Anybody else would like to comment, uh, especially maybe Charlie? Before we read your letter in, Charlie?
Well, Brian and I worked very closely together to try and come up with the final plan that, uh, satisfied my concerns, and, uh, at the same time, uh, being respectful of what they were trying to accomplish here also. Uh, Brian, on your plan, uh, that's up on the screen right now, it's hard to tell that the eight spaces that are on the south side of Cooper Street are actually separated by a small island and a crosswalk. Uh, do you want to point that out, so that people realize that they're not all together? Yeah.
True.
There were initially eight spaces all together. Um, they've now been separated, so they're four and four. Uh, so that each, um, uh, group of four has a crosswalk that's very close to it and a sidewalk that's behind the parking spaces as well. So that addressed my concern, and, uh, Brian can, uh, speak a little bit more to, uh, why he doesn't feel that, uh, that last lot will ever be developed. But at least for, for the present time, with Title V, um, design being in the, um, configuration that you have, it prevents that third lot from being developed because it's all part and parcel of a calculation that you have to do through Title V when you're in a, a restricted zone. Uh, so there's so much density per acre that is allowed through Title V, and that's why you've got the configuration that you have. And so long as they're on Title V, uh, that third lot will never be developed. Um, should sewer go down there in the future? Uh, that would change in case, um, uh, that third lot wanted to be developed and a sewer line was extended down there. Then, um, that reserve area that Brian, uh, talked about on the lot, which is to the south of Cooper Street, would become the, uh, area where those eight spaces in Cooper Street would be relocated to. The purpose for doing that is so that, uh, traffic on those eight spaces, if the road were extended, that traffic would not be backing out into the line of traffic in Cooper Street. So that, that issue has been resolved. Um, and I, I think that pretty much summarizes it, Brian. Um, you did, uh, do some alterations to the locations of the subsurface leaching facilities that were in Cooper Street. Um, they have now been moved out, so that in the case of, uh, settlement or anything, uh, the surface of pavement of Cooper Street is not going to be affected. So I think that was a good move to do that. Uh, basically, that, that squares away most of what we had talked about, John.
Okay. A, actually, a couple of quick questions for Brian, if you would. Um, this first crosswalk, you talked about the raised crosswalk. Um, I was out at the site today and drove down, and all of a sudden, it became, uh, undrivable. We're driving into the woods. Is that about the spot where the raised crosswalk would be?
Um, no, no, the, the raised crosswalk would be further up the road. It would be right, um, after you pass the last parking lot for South Cape or the last parking lot entrance for South Cape on your left. Um, but prior to the access drive for the next, um, units that are on your right.
Okay, okay. I can just...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, just for your reference, where, where the road ends and turns into, um, dirt is right around at this location here.
Got it. Yep, okay. All right, uh, the other question I had is, uh, what is the speed limit on Cooper Street anyway? Any idea?
I do not know. Uh, it's not a town road. Um, I, I would think it's not more, it would, it'd be posted at no more, not more than 20 miles per hour? At, at, probably not even that. It's really, feels like an, like a drive, like a driveway.
I agree. Charlie, any comment on what you think that speed limit might be?
Well, it certainly isn't much over the 20, uh, especially given, uh, the condition of it. It, it's got some places where the existing pavement is not in good shape. Uh, but I wouldn't think it would be much more than that. Um, it'd be similar to going in any other subdivision street that, uh, is within the town of Mashpee. You've got only a 20-foot paved surface to drive on. Um, so anytime that somebody goes into any one of those developments, it would be a typical speed limit there. Probably not much more than 30 if it was that much.
Got it. And it's a severe slope going down that hill. I mean, you're going really downhill into this area, starting really right where that cra, raised crosswalk is. If you haven't been out there, I mean, it's, it's going down in a pretty good, uh, pretty good pitch, so... Okay, that was really kind of all the question I had. Um, actually, uh, Sharon, do you have Charlie's letter from today?
Yes. Would you like me to read it?
Yeah, please, if you would.
Okay, it's a letter dated February 2nd, 2021. Um, it's to the Mashpee's Board of Appeals. Attention Jonathan Furbish, Chairman. In regards of 950 Falmouth Road, 40B project, peer review. Dear Chairman Furbish, over the past several days, I've been in communication with Brian Kuchar, P.E. of Horsley-Witten Group, to discuss the site plan in, in details for the above referenced project. Having reviewed the final site plan and the adjustments that have been made to it, I am recommending approval of the plan subject to two conditions. One, the project be approved subject to a final review of the drainage, drainage calculations. What small changes that may occur during this review should not adversely impact the project and can be accomplished within 20 days of filing the approval with the Mashpee Town Clerk. Two, final site lighting may be subject to review depending on whether there will be any building-mounted lighting on the project. At this time, the outside lighting plan indicates low-intensity pole mounting units within the parking and access driveways with no direct impact on the buildings. Maximum mounting height has been limited to 12 feet. The condition should include a requirement to keep all lighting pedestals at least three feet behind the curb line so as not to block the full sidewalk access. The special permit should reflect the latest plan set dates as provided by Horsley-Witten. They may be different than what is currently in the document. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. Very truly yours, Charles L. Rowley.
Okay, so we want to make sure, in the conditions, Scott, that, um, we certainly reference this as, um, being part of the conditions.
I, I noted it.
Good, and hopefully, um, it's been written into the draft anyway.
Well, I noted that it adds for, condition adds for comments by Charlie Rowley. I just didn't look at.
I think that would work.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that, um, since I lay on a cork?
Yep.
Yes, that, that would work to add it. I, I did not have that letter when I wrote that motion, so we can certainly add that.
Okay, good. Um, just going over a couple of the questions that I had from, um, the last meeting. And there was a bunch of questions, and a lot of them were answered by Charlie and this group in the last five minutes. But let me go over the ones I have that I'm not sure we have the right answer to. So let me start. Um, do we have a signed copy of the agreement? And we're talking page two, number nine. So let me see if I can...
Yes, that was provided last week.
Okay, good. And I'm talking about, for everybody, we're talking about the, um, decision here. And it's page two, number nine. So the next question I had was page three, number six. So is it Cooper Street or Cooper Road?
I think it's Cooper Street, uh, John.
Yeah, I had seen one time. Uh, matter of fact, I think it was on a letter from Mary Wagon when they took the street and changed the name. I believe it was written in there, "The Road."
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have the Mashpee Planning Board Certificate of Action dated February 7, 2018. And what it says certifies that it's made the decision on that, on January 17, um, and that they approved the renaming of Crump Street to Cooper Street.
I have the same thing in a memorandum from, uh, uh, Mary Wagon to the E1, 911 Coordinator and the Town Clerk.
So we're going with Cooper, Cooper Street then. Good. Okay. And next one, Charlie answered. Uh, oh. Mashpee Water. I spoke with, be with me for a minute. Oh, boy. Andy Marks? I'll give this paperwork. Be with me. Yeah, I spoke with, um, Andy Marks, and he said it's kind of a work in progress regarding actually, uh, making sure that the water connection goes through. It's not completely done, so I want to make sure that in the conditions, that we condition the final approval as conditioned, to be conditioned with a final approval from Mashpee Water. So that's still, hasn't been completely ironed out, but he said it won't be a problem. We just don't have a final answer yet.
And, Mr. Chairman, it would be perfectly fine to have a condition that says that, um, the water connection is granted by the ZBA under 40B, but it's subject to, um, confirmation, a referral to a confirmation by the Mashpee Water District for determination of full compliance with technical requirements, um, that apply, because there's no intention to, um, to vary from those technical requirements.
Good, perfect. All right, my next one was... Somebody mute there? Thank you. Okay, the next one, let's see, I had page five, number two. Page five, number two. Okay, so it talked about shall provide appropriate surety to the ZBA to construct a relevant portion of Cooper Street, also known as, uh, well, Cross Street, which may include one or more following types of surety. And I think you might have already, uh, talked about that, Alana?
Yes, yes. Uh, we provided you in the motion, uh, with, um, a, a change to that which would remove the letter of credit as an option for surety, since I understand it's the board's practice to avoid letters of credit as surety in this kind of situation.
Okay, good. Okay, let's see. About halfway through this. Page 10, section 6.02. Hey. A waiver is requested from the requirements of Section 3 re, uh, regarding notice of project change information as previously made above. Granted, as any proposed change to the approved project shall be processed under the procedures set forth under 760 CMR 56.045 in parentheses. And I was just looking for an explanation to what that was.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Uh, what we did in the, um, draft motion that we gave to you is to provide a, a new section under the conditions that would address how modifications to the comprehensive permit would be granted, because we understood from your comment last time that you wanted to make sure that the decision sets it out in a way so that people reading the decision would know what to do. And so we've proposed a new Section G, which would be entitled "Modifications to the Comprehensive Permit", and it would read, "Any modification to this comprehensive permit shall be accomplished as required in 760 CMR 560511, which provides that insubstantial changes may be approved by the board without a public hearing, but substantial changes shall require a public hearing. A determination of whether a proposed change is substantial or not shall be made by the board using the required factors set forth under the state regulations of 760 CMR 56074." So if you add that language in, then there will be a roadmap for people, uh, in the event that a modification is sought.
Very good, thank you. Okay, let's see. Page 10, number one. Let's see, where is that? Oh, okay. It's at the very bottom of page 10. It's under number four, so it's 4-1. ZBA, 174-9, the applicant requests a waiver from the requirement that all buildings and uses shall comply with the ZBA provisions that allow for the buildings and uses shown on the plan. So my question is, if you're putting in housing, why would you need a waiver?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I can respond to that. Uh, whenever a 40B application comes in, most typically, 99.999% of the time, the project will not comply with the density requirements, as this project does not comply with the normal dens, density requirements that apply under the zoning bylaw. And so there is always a waiver request under the, um, application so that the provision under the zoning bylaw that says, because typically there is, always is one, which says, you know, everything, uh, uh, that is put on the land shall comply with the zoning bylaw. This just says that you're approving the plan, uh, under the comprehensive permit has to be, has to be, um, constructed sufficiently in accordance with the plans, and that there is not an intention to reduce the density that's shown on the plans by requiring, you know, you know... by requiring, you know, full compliance with this particular provision.
Okay. Uh, Charlie, does that make sense to you?
Yes, it does. Uh, it may be something that'll make it easier for the building inspector to issue the permit ultimately.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on that?
No.
Okay, uh, let's see. Be with me. Getting there. Page eleven, number three. So let's see. Uh, one seventy-four dash twenty-two, the applicant requests a waiver from the requirements that no building or land may be occupied or used except for a purpose set forth in the table of uses and to allow the buildings and uses shown on the plans. So again, same thing. Why is there a waiver needed? Is there something?
If I, if I may, Mr. Chairman, this is the, um, the complimentary waiver to the one that you just raised. The one that you raised just a moment ago related to dimensional requirements. This one relates to use requirements. And so, you know, both the dimensional and the use, uh, normal requirements don't allow the kind of density and, and the configuration of the buildings that you see, uh, that we hope to have approved on the plan. And so we need a waiver both from the dimensional, which was the first one that you just mentioned, and from the use requirements so that multifamily housing is allowed as, as shown on the plans.
Okay, that makes sense. So it's really multifamily housing?
Precisely.
Got it. Makes sense, okay. Let's take care of that. Okay. Maybe you can answer this one for me. I don't have it on the list, but actually, I think I do. I think Charlie answered this one. It's number eleven, page eleven, number four. And I think, uh, Charlie did answer it, so I think we're all set there. Um, what is it, Jonathan, so that I know that I did? Okay. One seventy-four dash twenty-three, the applicant requests a waiver from the requirements that the applicant post a performance bond for erosion and street right-of-way damages.
I, I think that was agreed to, uh, by the applicant and through their attorney, that they were going to do that anyway. That's separate from the security for the release of the lots. But they were going to post, uh, security or make sure that they took care of any damage to Cooper Street that was a result of the construction of the water main that comes in from Route twenty-eight.
So, Alana, is that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, what we were proposing was that when you grant the waiver, um, that, that, that you grant it, but, but you know that the petition, you know, uh, shall be required, the petitioner shall be required to repair any damage to the existing portion of Cooper Street.
Okay. All right, um. Next one is page twelve. Okay. So the question I had was, um, you listed on your chart, like, minimum lot size, proposed, and, and what's, what's allowed and what's proposed. And I went down the list, and you listed height thirty-five feet, but you didn't give us a proposed. So I'm not sure what the actual height is of the highest building.
That, Mr. Chairman, can, uh, put that over to, um, to Brian, um, who starts it in?
Sorry, I was on mute. Um, is, is the architect on? No, no.
He was on earlier. I did see him on earlier.
I'm available. What's the question?
What's the height of the, the largest building? The height of the tallest building, I should say. Because in the records, it doesn't say it.
Give me one minute to pull that out of the set for you.
Okay. Why don't I go to the next comment, just in, while he's checking that out? Well, and it's the last one. It's page twelve, number nine. And let's see. And I just asked Charlie to comment on that, and I think you did. And it is, the applicant requests a waiver to allow the minimum parking lot size aisle width to be reduced from twenty-four to twenty feet. So I think you already talked about that, didn't you, Charlie?
I did. Um, it may not be in your correspondence, but I did talk about that with Brian. Uh, and we've come to the conclusion that what they've got shown will be adequate. Uh, it's, it's okay because what they have done is extend the actual parking stalls to, uh, something more than is required typically. Uh, the stalls are twenty feet deep. And it's, overall, there's only a, uh, uh, I think it was a three foot, four inch dimension that was changed. And then in the other case was maybe a foot or two. But, uh, those dimensions actually are long based on the majority of vehicles that we see today, so I don't think that's going to be an issue. Uh, also, in the parking lot that goes around building C, that's a one-way parking lot. Uh, so that you're backing out against the sidewalk on the other side, so there's no cars to interfere coming out that way. So I feel that, uh, that plus, if you also look at building A, there's a portion of that parking area where you would be backing out against the sidewalk where there wouldn't be any, uh, traffic, uh, uh, sitting on the other side of the parking area. So I think that those reductions are suitable in this particular, uh, instance, and that since it is a parking area where there's going to be light vehicle traffic in and out, I think it's suitable. I think it's okay.
Good. All right. So that's really the only questions I had with your, um, original. Be with me here. Draft decision of January twenty-sixth, Alana. So you've answered all the questions I've had, except for what's the height of the highest building?
The highest building is three stories, and from the average grade plane, uh, to the midpoint of the slope of the roof, I believe it's thirty-one foot four.
Okay. So the maximum height allowed is thirty-five, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's covered either way. It just wasn't on the sheet. That's all.
It's on the architectural cover sheet. There's a building height, area, somewhere first, seventy.
I was looking at the draft decision.
Right, right. Apologies, Mr. Chairman.
That's quite all right. I just wanted to make sure. All right, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I could ask a question, Mr. Charlie?
Sure.
Um, is it confirmed that that height is measured to the midpoint of the, of the roof and not the peak?
Let me double check that.
Yeah, it should be to the peak, right, Charlie?
That's my understanding.
Scott, you agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, we should know this answer for the record anyway.
If it's more than thirty-five to the peak, then you'd have to consider a waiver on that.
I agree. I mean, I don't have an issue with it. I just want to make sure.
Right.
That we know what we're doing. Yeah, just waiting for the height. Oh, Charlie, while we're waiting.
Yes.
Uh, uh, my apologies. I didn't realize I, uh, I had made it myself. That thirty-one four was to the peak.
Oh, it's to the peak?
Thirty-one is to the peak, is that the?
Okay. Is that from the average grade around the building? Or is it from the lowest grade?
It's from the average grade.
Average, because you've got two different levels there on building B, uh, which dramatically changed the elevation.
If you go from the, if you go from the lowest grade, it is. Uh, you're looking at, um, approximately forty-three feet from the lowest grade to the peak.
Yeah, but that's, that's not where it's measured, right? It's measured from the average grade.
Correct.
So it would be, for example, partway down that side slope that you'd measure to the peak.
Because there's a significant grade change around that building.
Yeah.
So is the height, um, that, that we need to use over thirty-five feet?
Well, we're just looking for a, a, a final answer, so we'll know whether or not, um.
I believe you said it was thirty-one four from the average grade to the peak. Is that correct, Matt?
That's what I have right now. Yes.
Okay.
So no, so no waiver is requested then?
Very good. That answers that question. All right, just a couple of old notes that I have. I'm, I'm sure these answers have already been given, but, uh, this is there, and I don't have the answer. Let me just ask, the road covenant, Charlie, the release of the road covenant, that's all it's got?
Yes. Well, uh, that's, um, a decision as to how you want to do it, Jonathan. It has to take place, I think, in order to clear the public record, uh, because the covenant is still in place according to what I saw at the Barnsford Registry. Uh, so, uh, perhaps, uh, Alana could speak to that a little bit as to how, uh, you propose to secure the construction of Cooper Street, uh, beyond where the trenching will take place for the water main so that, uh, that covenant can be released. I know the planning board, uh, usually does it, but in this case, the ZBA acting as the planning board for the forty B has the authority to do that. But typically, under the subdivision rules regs, you get a release on the lot once you provide the security or you construct the road. So, uh, how, how might you be going about this, uh, moving forward?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, what we're asking is that the, um, ZBA act as, um, shall act as the, um, as the planning board and release the covenant, you know, to the extent, uh, you know, appropriate, and to impose whatever surety, uh, is appropriate at the time. And, and obviously, that's where we were talking about, uh, the money-based surety, um, on, on condition, uh, under D on page five, D conditions imposed, number two, second bullet, that we should provide appropriate surety to the ZBA to construct a relevant portion of Cooper Street, which may include one or more of the following types of surety, uh, you know, you know, the no occupancy permits shall issue until the infrastructure is finished or, or secured by money-based surety. And then we listed the type of money-based surety, um, that could be imposed, a deposit of money, a surety bond, a tri-partyed agreement, and with the amount of, of the surety to be determined by the ZBA in cooperation with the building officials or the, or the board's peer review consultant.
The only, the only, um, question I would have on the language that there is, uh, that it would, uh, be released before any building, uh, occupancy could take place. But I believe, uh, the planning statute says that before you can actually issue a building permit, that that security has to be in place. So, uh, how do you address that particular change? I know that you want to get moving on this and, um, get things under construction, but how would you handle that? And in case you actually are going to use security, do you have any idea how much that security would be?
I don't know about the amount of the surety. Perhaps someone else on the team could speak to that, but we do, in the conditions posed, you know, specifically state that the board acting as the planning board should release any existing subdivision surety upon the request by the petitioner. And we would anticipate that that would happen before building permits, um, are, are sought. And so, you know, we would go through this, this procedure, you know, before building permits are sought. And so the amount would be, would be obviously put into place then. Or, um, y- y- you know, we could, you know, obviously, it's just not going to happen right now. And I don't know if there's anyone on the, who knows what the cost of the road infrastructure would amount to.
I, I would suggest that, um, once you put this project out to bid, uh, that you will get some numbers in there which will reflect the cost of the road construction and the utilities that will be located in it. Uh, it doesn't matter about the parking lot or, or any of the infrastructures that's on the site. It's simply those utilities and the road construction within Cooper Street. So if that were broken out so that you had an actual number, then at that time, the, the ZBA could approve that number, and in exchange for that approved number and the security being posted, they could release the covenant from the record.
So that's the logistics of how it works? We need the number first before we can do anything?
I, I would say so, Jonathan. Um, typically, that's how it's done. And since you do have some time, uh, once the proposal goes out to bid so that you know what those numbers are, um, I would think then that with that numbers and the mechanism for getting the security in place with the town, that you could then go right to town to get the, uh, covenant release document done. So I don't think it's anything that has to happen today, but perhaps you want to write it into the permit somehow for that.
Well, it is, it is written, the permit, it is written.
Okay.
That we should provide appropriate surety, um, and, and that the, the board will, the ZBA will act as the planning board to release the covenant. So it is, it is in the document that's proposed.
Okay, so.
Okay, that, that can be done at a later time?
Yes, it does not need to be done today. Does not need to be done today, for sure.
Okay.
I would agree, I would agree with that, Jonathan.
All right, good.
I, I would, I would.
Whittling through my pile of paper, I apologize. I'm sure this is already straightened out, but I know there were comments from the board of health. Is that all straightened out?
John?
It's all right, it's all right.
Okay.
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I can speak to that. What we did was, we, um, we proposed a condition. It would be on, let's see, it would be on page. Section D. So it's on page five of the draft decisions, um, D paragraph one. There would be an additional sentence added there to say, "As confirmed by the town's health agent." "Our facility shall not further develop due to Title V requirements, and the access way for the project shall not be extended beyond what is shown on the plan, meaning it shall not be extended to provide for true connection without modification to this decision as a substantial modification that will, shall require a public hearing." And then in addition, on page four, paragraph fourteen. And then in addition, on page four, paragraph fourteen, we would change the language there, "The project will be served by private infrastructure that will be located on parcel B and conform to the requirement three oh one, um, CMR fifteen point one two five", to basically just say, "The project will be served by private infrastructure that will be located on parcels B and will conform to the Board of Health's requirements and the necessary superconnection permit, uh, is provided, uh, hereunder."
Hey Jim, could you mute your phone when you're speaking? I thought it was on mute. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Alana.
Okay, so basically, there are two places where this needs to go, one is on page four of the draft decision on paragraph fourteen, and then the other is on page five, under condition, under conditions imposed, D, paragraph one, uh, just, which would just make it consistent that we're going to comply with the Board of Health's, uh, conditions, and confirming that the, because I believe that this was the, the Chairman's main point, that the access way for the project shall not be extended beyond what is shown on the plans without a modification to the decision as a substantial modification that shall require a public hearing. So so long as it's under Title V, you know, it certainly cannot be built upon, you know, cannot be extended any further if parcel C can't be, um, built upon any further, but as Mr. Rowley said, if sewer came in, which seems pretty unlikely, but if it did come in, what this would provide is that there would in any event have to be a modification to this decision by the ZBA pursuant to a public hearing.
Got it, okay. So also, I think we, I'll have you address this, probably Alana, um, we got some photos today and a letter from the, um, fire chief, I don't know if you wanted to review that for everyone?
Yes, on the fire chief, the, uh, board had indicated, you know, some, um, concern, you know, had, had the fire department weighed in sufficiently on the plan, and so we provided two things that had actually previously been provided, one was a July twenty-twenty email from the fire department basically saying that the plan's, you know, been reviewed and, and looked okay, and then there was a November eighteen twenty-twenty letter from the fire chief, which I believe you read into the record at one of the earlier, um, public hearing sessions where the chief said, basically, that the, um, requirements of the state fire code have been satisfied. And then we also today gave you some pictures which they can, can put up on the, on the, um, on the screen, if you would like, that show the, um, perspectives of, of, you know, some photographs of the buffer with the plan imposed below, so that you can see the perspective for the, um, for this, for the buffer, if you would like to see that.
Sure, if you could put those up, or sh- either that you or Sharon, because they're pretty good pictures, revealing if you haven't been down there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to pull those up if I can share the screen here.
Sure.
Okay, so the photo you're looking at now is the photo, um, this is in the woods in, you know, in the approximate location of, uh, where the, the main parking lot will be, so I have a little arrow indicated on this, uh, on the site here.
Got it.
Looking northwest, looking northwest towards the, um, towards the nearest building itself. This is just to kind of give you a, a sense of what the current underbrush, underbrush in the natural buffer looks like.
These are the South Cape buildings, correct?
Exactly, so you're looking through the woods from about where the, the northern edge of the parking lot would be towards South Cape, correct?
Mhm, got it?
Yep. And we do have several others we could, we could show as well, but it'd be, you know, um, I can kind of go through them, but it's pretty, just to kind of give you a sense of, um, what the site looks like currently.
Yeah, throw the other two up if you would.
Sure.
As quickly.
All right, hold on, let's see, I gotta find that one. Okay. So just going through really quickly, again, this is from the same location, just panning a little bit more to the north, so a little bit to my right. That's the photo you just saw, same location. And then this is just panning a little bit to the left, so you can see on the left, uh, here is the, is the access road, uh, coming in, um, right there.
Got it.
Again, let's see, and this is, you know, again, looking, this is looking more to the right, and, uh, so I was in the woods, like, right in here is about the location I was taking those photos fr- from, just to give you a sense.
Got it.
And then this is again, we're coming, coming down from, uh, from Thomas Road. The, earlier in the meeting, we were discussing with the crosswalk location, which would be somewhere up in this area right here.
Right before you take up into those two buildings?
Yeah, so it's, um, right as you make this turn, yeah, right where the, the shading kind of cha- kind of changes here is the, the approximate location and the, the South Cape housekeeping area is off to the left here, uh, which is the main point where there, there will be, you know, people walking across the road and, uh, uh, coming to and from the housekeeping building to the, to the other, um, buildings.
Okay, you also got one of a brush pile, which is way down?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, let me go, this is sort of kind of pan through here, yeah, so this is the, this is basically all the way down at the end of the road, um, directly acco-
To the woods, there it is.
Just before you get to the wood, yeah, so just a brush pile and some dumping that has happened there.
And somebody's dumped some lumber there? So, yeah, I thought if the board hadn't been out to the area, um, this would certainly give people an idea of what it's about. Uh, okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Alana, you sent an email back on January twenty-sixth to Mary Ann, it says, "Just an FYI, there will not be an architectural update, it's all set."
Right, when, when I had given the original decision, I had left, um, left it open as to whether there had been, because I wasn't sure whether there had been any revisions to the architectural plans, and so I wanted to get the draft decision to you as quickly as possible, and then I realized after talking with the architect that there was no update, so I was just letting her know that there was no need to wait for that.
Okay, and also I got, I'm looking at a copy, I think it's the, the deed signed by everybody in the town, and it's a number of different pages.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you had asked both for the signed development agreement and for the deeds that the, um, trust had, had taken, uh, from the town, so yes, um, we sent you the signed development agreement and the backup deeds that we have, that, that went to the Mashpee Affordable Housing Trust from town meeting.
Right, and there's the...
Development agreement.
Yep, so that's all set, okay. That is all I have, you have answered any questions and all questions that I had, great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So...
I, I do have one correction to the, to the, uh, draft decision on page six, uh, paragraph seven. It was in, it was highlighted in yellow because when I gave you the draft decision, I wasn't a hundred percent sure whether both of the crosswalks were going to be raised, and so it, it read two raised crosswalks, but you just need to eliminate the word raised, because only one of them is going to be raised. So it would just say, "Two crosswalks", you know, as shown in the plan.
Okay, so, uh, how are we going to make that change?
Well, in the motion that I gave to you, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I included a provision, if the board finds it easier and appropriate for you to authorize, um, us to go and take this draft I gave you last week, and just do a redline change of all of the, the matters that you're talking about tonight, so that you can confirm that they've been done accurately. We're happy to do that for you if it makes it easier.
Uh, yeah, I'm, yeah, I don't really have any problem with that, I think, but I'm probably not the best person to ask. David, any comment on that?
Um, um, so it was about the raised qua- crosswalks, um, yeah, I don't know how the, how, I, I don't have much of comment for the raised qua- crosswalk.
So, rather than retype the whole thing, redline it out, is the question, whether that's appropriate or not, and I'm not really sure. Alana, I can't hear you. I still can't hear you, Alana. Sharon, put up the sign.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna hang up and call back.
Oh, we hear you now? Oh, no, we hear you now. Bill, do you have any comment on redlining out?
No.
I don't know if it's appropriate or not.
Does that work?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yep, yep.
Okay, great, all right, um, perfect. So, we were talking about, um, were we still talking about the crosswalks, or were we talking about something else? I, I think I lost my train.
Uh, lining out the, um...
Oh, I'm sorry, we're talking about the decision, yes.
The decision, thank you.
You know, once, once you close the public hearing, you can't take any new information, but all we would be doing is, uh, helping clerically to provide you with the decision as voted tonight. And so we, there would be no changes, there would be redlines, um, and then you would, you and staff would, would confirm that it's accurate based upon your votes and, and the discussions this evening. So no new information after the public hearing is closed, just a, a clerical back and forth, you know, in terms of assisting with the preparation of the decision itself, just clerical.
John, John, this is, this is very common, I think, John. Good, sounds good to me. All right, I, I'd like to hear from, uh, Rosaline Cassidy, but before we do that, um, let me go around the room. Sharon, do you have any questions, comments, concerns?
No, I'm fine, I'm good.
Uh, Scott, anything?
Nope, good.
Jim, cool.
Uh, let's not forget that, uh, someone made, uh, a motion or a suggestion that, uh, this project must remain in forty-B in perpetuity, uh, I, I hadn't heard it mentioned, so...
Okay.
I'll throw it out there.
Before we go further, Alana, can you comment on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm just trying to find out where, look for where that is in the decision. What the decision says is that the project will remain affordable so long as it does not conform with zoning, and so long as it is required to be affordable by the various, uh, grants that are received, either federal or state or local, because of course, there's going to be a CP, um, you know, a Community Preservation, um, Committee, uh, grant as well, and also there's a development agreement with the Mass Housing, um, Affordable Trust. So all of those things will, will combine to require affordability, but again, it will be, uh, it will definitely be affordable so long as, um, it does not comply with zoning, and of course, it does not comply with zoning because it's multi-family housing.
So the answer is, we're all set?
Yes.
Sounds good. Bill?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm all good, I just, Scott, I just want to make sure Scott's good with, uh, the motion.
Well, am I adding that condition that remains in, is affordable in perpet- perpetuity, or I don't have to know?
It's in, it's in that it's so long as it's, um, not in compliance with zoning and, and, and for so long as it's required under one of its grants, either from the state or the federal government, or from, um, the...
Local.
Mass Ha- Affordable Housing Trust, or from the Community Preservation Committee. Obviously, every time the town meeting gives money under the, uh, Community Preservation Act, they are required to get a, a deed restriction, uh, in exchange.
Okay. George?
So, excuse me, Bill, am I putting that in there or not, do I need, I don't need to then, do I?
I, I don't believe you do. No, you don't. George?
I'm good, thank you, John.
Okay, how about Jim? Can't hear you, Jim. Okay, I think he's probably good, he can't unmute that phone, I guess.
And, and Mr. Chairman, just to interrupt very quickly, the affordability provision is on page four, paragraph fifteen, so it is there.
Excellent, good. Okay, uh, before we go to Rosaline, uh, David, anything at all?
Well, I, I just want to, you know, um, I jumped into this, you know, in the middle, and, uh, I caught up on, on both ends and go, moving forward, but I just want to, you know, reiterate the good work, uh, from the town engineer, uh, great work by Charlie and on this board to address all the issues that have come up in, in this, uh, project, and, uh, I think did an excellent job, I'm very impressed.
Okay, okay, with that being said, um, Rosaline, there was a, a long letter that you wrote about a week ago, and we did forward it to Alana and her crew, and I know they've made, uh, quite a few, I guess you'd call them maybe concessions or something, and I'd like you to speak about those concessions and the feelings on that, and see if, um, um, it's better than it was originally presented. So if you could speak to that, that would be good. Yeah, I can't hear you, I think you muted your phone.
Sorry about that, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first of all, I just want to say thank you so much, I know that you have the very difficult, if not impossible task of trying to keep everybody, um, so just be, you know, appreciate the patience with that and, and all consideration of our, of our concern. Um, certainly, we're very grateful to see the addition, um, and again, as I, as I know you understand, we wanted to make sure that something concrete was put in place, and very glad certainly to see the addition of the crosswalks, because safety is our primary concern here. Um, also, um, very happy to see some additional buffering, the more the better, um, because even though I know you're saying that it's some dense, uh, I wouldn't call them dense woods, there are, you know, there are, there are woods, but, um, when Dave and I were walking, you can certainly, see it's quite open there in the wintertime, but the additional buffering will certainly help. Um, I, I think, you know, outside of safety, our, our biggest concern is the impact of construction, particularly on our, um, busy, busy season. And, uh, you know, like I, I even said to Dave when we were out there walking, if you have the choice of coming to this resort with construction throughout the summer, or another resort somewhere else, well, where are you going to go? Who, who's, who's going to choose that resort with the noise? And I, I actually spoke to somebody who lives, you know, I've been looking at other developments in the area, and, um, actually spoken with a couple of people that lived in, you know, close to that kind, that level of construction, and it is, you know, pretty extreme noise, um, so I, I'm just wondering if we've made any progress around that. I know you've made some suggestions, but, um, in terms of time and doing maybe more indoor work like, uh, somebody has suggested is done in other areas, that would be a big help. Oh, and one other question before I forget, um, as, as we were talking about the road there, maintenance of the road going forward, is it still not a town road? Like snow removal, that sort of thing?
I think it's a private road, isn't it?
Yes, yes, it is.
Yeah, and I know one of... I know one of the concessions that, um, Alana and her group made was about the hours and, uh, during the summer inside work on Sundays, so I thought that was, that was nice, and they agreed to a schedule. I, I don't know if somebody's got that handy that'd like to go through that for, uh, everybody's, um, consumption.
July, and August as follows. Monday through Friday, seven AM to five thirty PM, Saturdays, seven AM to one PM, Sunday, no outdoor construction activity. Additionally, from July fourth through Labor Day, outdoor construction activities at the property shall be further limited as follows. Monday through Friday, seven thirty to eight, seven fifty AM to five thirty PM, Saturdays and Sundays, no outdoor construction activities. Additionally, there shall be no outdoor construction activities at the property on the following holidays: New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Easter Sunday, Memorial Day, July fourth, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans Day, Christmas Day, with a note that interior construction work shall not be restricted as referenced above. And certainly, Mr. Chairman, this is a huge, um, concession and beyond, you know, certainly what is required under, under the town's local requirements, so we've gone far beyond, you know, you know, what, what would normally be required.
I, I think, uh, my hat's off to you and, uh, your crew for doing this, uh, for that, uh, for their group down there, and, uh, I, I certainly can imagine, Rosaline, that you and your group do appreciate that.
Yes, yes, of course, but, you know, our, again, our, our concern remains around the noise. It, it is an unusual situation, you know, and again, as I said, I, I totally understand you have an impossible task here, but it is an unusual situation having this level of construction really basically in, in the middle of a resort. So, you know, ti- time will tell. I, I know you've done your very best first year, and, uh, certainly I've done my best to bring our concern to everybody, so.
Yeah.
You know, the whole...
All right, Chair.
Can we add Thanksgiving to that list?
That sounds like a good idea. So, we missed that, didn't we?
Yes.
We did, we did, Mr. Chairman.
So, can you add that in, Alana?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yes, yes, of course.
I don't think anybody want to work, they don't want to work on Thanksgiving anyway. So, that'll make it easy. All right, any final thoughts before I have, um, Scott make a motion?
Jonathan, can I raise just a quick question?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Uh, you're gonna make reference to my letter of today, uh, for the two conditions?
I think, uh, yeah, I think Scott was going to do that, weren't you, Scott?
Well, I was, yeah, I was, all comments by Charlie Rowley is what I had.
Okay, but that'll be, that'll be written into the decision?
I think, I think Charlie, the way that, that Scott would read it in is all comments provided by Charlie Rowley. So...
Well, I think, Mr. Chairman, that was sad stuff.
I'm only, I'm only saying that it's not in there now in any form, so it means that it, it, the draft decision's gonna have to be adjusted to brought up to date for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so if that's the case, can you take care of the sidewalk or the crosswalk issue and not have to strike out one of the two, and just make it one crosswalk that's raised, the other crosswalk is still gonna be there, as, as described by Brian?
Right, it will just, the, the word raised will come out, and we'll just say two crosswalks as shown on the plan.
Okay, he, but he, he did have, what, two or three concerns that weren't in the paperwork. So, I guess Charlie's question is, um, with what you're proposing, will that take care of?
Is this on the letter of February two?
Uh, yeah, I don't, correct, I can't find it right at the moment, but, yeah.
Well, there's a, there's a letter, there's a, what, what we're gonna do is, and, and this is in the motion that we provided, the draft decision will be revised to indicate that, that the plan that's being approved is the one, the final one that the peer review consultant looked at that's dated February twenty twenty-one. So, that will be the plan that's referenced. So, provided that that has all of the, um, crosswalk changes that you wanted to see, then that's the, the one that's, that's going to be voted on. And then there would be two amendments to the draft decision. One would be to reference, um, Charlie Rowley's two, two, two thousand and one letter, uh, with respect to the final review of drainage calculations and, uh, um, and the final light sighting, uh, sight lighting. And then a third one would be, and this is for Scott's benefit, the third, uh, the third change would be for the water, um, you know, which we had talked about earlier, that there would be...
I forgot, I forgot that.
Okay. Do you have that, Scott, that's all set, okay?
Well, Sharon wrote a letter from Charlie dated today, February second, and it's a one-pager, and that's what Charlie's talking about.
Right, I think she's, she's addressed that fine, as far as I'm concerned, because it will be reflected in the draft decision that will be adjusted for your signatures. That's, that's fine.
Right, it's been read in.
I'm satisfied.
But in other words, the narrative, uh, the narrative in the letter didn't address the crosswalks, the issues that he's talking about, it's the plan that he looked at, but that plan will be referenced, so it should be up to date.
Right. Okay, David?
My motion I have here, the motion I have here says draft decision January twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-one, is that incorrect?
There's a new one today. Is it there?
No, I did not do a new decision. What I did was a motion that includes changes to that draft, so as to make it less confusing, so that the, the, um, motion that I gave you, uh, would just say, look, here are the, here are the ways that the decision is going to be, um, repot.
But it's the one you sent out today, correct?
Yes, yes.
Is it the one you have, Scott?
You are...
You would have sent it today from Marriott.
Yeah, 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 it said, yeah, it said draft motion's for February second, but if you read down to, on motion two, it says draft decision January twenty seventh, I just want to make sure that's correct.
Yes, yes, that's the one that I sent last week.
Yep.
That's the only one I have. It's, it's dated today, but I just want to make sure that's correct.
But that's draft decision for January twelfth, okay. I believe that's correct, Scott.
Okay.
What you received today were three draft motions, and you don't need the third one, because the third one had to do with authorizing the chair to sign, and you already have a, a, a blanket authorization. You don't need that third motion, and the first one was to close the public hearing.
Okay, yeah.
Correct.
David, David, did you have something?
Well, I was, I was just getting back to the crosswalk, I, I, it wasn't on the drawing that it's not gonna be raised, one's gonna be raised and one's not?
Correct.
So, that's already documented, I would think.
Hey, so, are we all good? Okay, so Scott, would you, uh, before we start, who is it, Brian? No, I'm sorry, somebody had a question. Go ahead.
I think it's Cory.
No, this is Cory, I'm Paul. So, and I apologize for this, but we do want to, we did want to make sure that we got everything absolutely right, and we didn't have to go back and have anything amended, but our architects, um, have double-checked the calculation on the height and have determined that, um, the, the applicable height is actually forty feet, two inches, um, on one of the buildings, and so, uh, it seems that we will need the, the height waiver after all. So, I wanted to make sure that that was clear and before we got too far.
Scott, that would be a height waiver of, uh, five feet, two inches?
Okay.
And, but just for one building? Was it just for one building, Cory?
Yes.
So, Cory, that, that's forty feet above average grade, correct?
Correct, to the peak. Uh, and I, if Matt, uh, if Matt is still on from Tite Design, I can, uh, ask, like...
It, it is, it's the average grade plane for the three-story building to the peak.
Thank you, Matt.
I, I apologize if the previous calculation was taken, um, prior to, we had adjusted the grades around that, the largest building.
Okay.
Five, five foot two inches? The waiver is five foot two inches?
That's what I believe it is, yes.
Yeah, but it's a special permit, we don't need a variance for it, do we?
No, no, no variance, it's just a, it's just a waiver.
A waiver?
Yep.
To the forty B?
Correct.
So, so, all that needs to happen is that on page twelve of the decision, the, um, the table there under height where it's thirty-five feet, it should then say forty-two feet, two inches next to it, and then a, and then a yes next to that, that, that a waiver is needed, and, and yes, that would be a five foot, two inch waiver.
Forty, forty feet, two inches, correct? Not forty-two?
Forty, forty-two inches to the top of the, to the top of the rig fence.
Fifty-two inches.
So, I'm gonna condition this, I'm, I'm conditioning, I'm just conditioning that we're allowing, it's just one building, correct? What's that building called?
Is it Building B?
Building B?
Cory, is it Building B? Or Matt?
Cory.
Matt, is it?
I'll defer to Matt on, on what the labeling on that's...
It's, it's Building B, it's a three-story building.
Right, thank you.
So, that's the only one that needs the waiver?
Right.
Correct, the, the other two buildings are only two stories.
Okay.
So, the, for the draft decision on page twelve, the table under paragraph seven from the prior page would say height thirty-five feet, then it would say forty, uh, feet, two inches, and then in parentheses, Building B only, and then yes, because there's a waiver needed for that. But it would say Building B only.
Okay. All right, one last time, if we got everything before Scott makes the motion. Okay, Scott, let's hear it.
All right, there with me, because that, this is the difference, this is attorney court supplied them, well, she supplied, she wrote the motion that I'm reading, so, uh, stay with me a little bit. Um, am I doing the, the motion for the closing of the public hearing?
I think you are, yes, Scott.
You do that first, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, I can make a motion that we approve, that the board vote to the close, to close the public hearing regarding the comprehensive permit application for preservation of affordable housing LLC for nine fifty Falmouth Road, Route twenty-eight, CP twenty twenty dash forty-six, after asking whether anyone had a new information to present.
Okay. All right, Jim Gould seconds, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Phil, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay.
Okay, second motion. I can make a motion or approve that the board vote to grant the comprehensive permit application for preservation of affordable housing LLC for nine fifty Falmouth Road, Route twenty-eight, CP dash twenty twenty dash forty-six, as set forth in a draft decision titled Draft Decision, January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, which the board reviewed after considering all evidence and material submitted, and with the following revisions that the draft decision, that the draft decision to be made: One, the draft decision shall be revised to insert the proper dates of action by the board and to indicate the names of the board members who acted on the application and the quantum of any vote taken. Two, the draft decision shall be revised if necessary to include the date of the final revised plan received by the board and reviewed by the board's peer review consultant. Three, the draft decision shall be subject to review by town council as to form. The draft, uh, four, the draft decision at section D conditions imposed, uh, one, shall have the following sentence added: As confirmed by the town's health agent, policy shall not be further developed due to the Title V requirements in the access way, the project shall not extend beyond what is shown on plans, i.e., shall not be extended to provide for through, through connection, thorough, no, through, through connection, without a modification to this decision as substantial modification that shall require a public hearing. Five, the draft decision at section D conditions imposed, two, second bullet, shall be revised to remove subsection A letter of credit and remaining options shall be relettered accordingly. Uh, six, the draft decision shall be revised to add a new section G as follows: G modifications to the comprehensive permit. Any modification to the comprehensive permit shall be accomplished as required under seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero five, in parentheses, eleven, which provides that substantial changes may be approved by the board without a public hearing, but substantial changes made shall require a public hearing. Determination of whether a proposed change is substantial or not shall be made by the board using the required factors set forth under the state regulations at seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero seven, parentheses, four. And, seven, revisions to the draft decision voted carrying of may be made by applicant council and redefine tracked changes format and then provided to the board's staff and then reviewed and confirmed by the staff and the DBA chairman to accurately reflect the board's actions. I'd like to also make, as per, as though we condition, as for all comments by all departments, as all comments made by Charlie Rowley and conditioned upon final approval of the Mashpee Water Department, condition that we allow a height waiver of five foot, two inches for Building B. That's it.
Okay. So, we have a second, Mike, hold on, let me do a roll call vote again. Scott, how do you...
Mr. Chairman, can you hold on, I think Alana has a question.
Could, could you read back the part about the water district? I didn't, I didn't quite hear that.
Can, uh, conditioned upon final approval of Mashpee Water Department.
What a different...
I think that we, was that the water connection was being given subject to, subject to determination, um, you know, review and approval by the water district that there is conformance with all of its technical requirements. That was my understanding of what you were talking about.
Okay, just say it different than the way you said it.
Condition upon...
Well, you mean, it's not a totally separate thing to go, to go completely separately to the, um, to the water district.
Uh, so, or Alana, how do, how do you want it presented?
I, I think that what we talked about was that you would say that the water connection permit is granted subject to final approval, final review and approval by the Mashpee Water District for conformance with all of its technical requirements.
All right, he's gonna, he's gonna write this down, so, say it again slowly.
Okay, um...
Well, I've got it, I, I, I've got it, conditioned upon the water connection permit is granted by the Mashpee Water District, but I lost after that, was the technical, what was about the technical?
Subject to the Mashpee Water District's review and approval of the plans for full compliance with the water, with the water's technical requirements.
I'm running out of room.
I just ran out of room.
Because I, I think, Alana, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what you're trying to get at is we want to make it clear that there will not be a separate approval process that we have to go through with the water district, right?
Except, you would, you would go with the plans, and they would look at them and make sure, review them and approve them, prove that they're technically compliant.
Well, I, I can read it just the way she said it, because I kind of have it. All right, let me read it this way and see how it sounds, if everyone, if there are people who, if they approve. Conditioned upon the water department, the Mashpee Water District's, I'm sorry, conditioned upon approval of the water connection, that the permit is granted by the Mashpee Water District, subject that the Mashpee Water District's, uh, uh, that they approve...
Want me to, want me to read it one more time?
Hold on, I gotta read it again, yeah, yeah.
The water connection permit is granted, subject to the Mashpee Water District reviewing and approving the plans for technical...
Well, I can't write that down.
Okay.
Water connection permit granted.
The water connection permit is granted, subject to the Mashpee Water District reviewing and approving the plans for technical...
Well, I can't write that down.
Okay.
Water connection permit granted.
The water connection permit is granted, subject to the Mashpee Water District reviewing and approving the plans for full compliance with the district's technical compliance, uh, technical requirements.
Scott, why don't you read it back? I'm still writing.
And I'm writing fast. Okay. Conditioned upon that the water connection permit is granted, subject to the Mashpee Water District's review and approval to the plan for the full compliance for the district's technical compliance.
Technical requirements.
Technical requirements, there's compliance.
There you go.
Technical requirements, I...
That's it. And then there were two other minor changes, one was on page four... One was on page four, paragraph fourteen, just to take out the language about the nitrogen loading, because it's under Title V rather than under the state, um, the state requirements. So there, so paragraph fourteen would just read, if you have the, if you have the, um, decision in front of you, Scott, you would just cross out and look, no, you don't, okay.
All I have is the motion.
Okay.
Can you handle it just as, as amended and agreed upon at this hearing?
Yes, that would be fine.
Very good, Bill.
And that would be true of, um, the, getting rid of the word raised as well for the crosswalks and adding Thanksgiving. Okay, yeah.
Do we add Thanksgiving? Right.
So, so Scott, you would just say. And, and as, you know, directed by the, uh, the board during this hearing.
Hey, so I think, I think you've just about finished it, didn't you?
I think that's it. That's all you have.
Yeah, unless I have to write and read in that paragraph as amended and agreed upon.
I think we did that a few times.
Yes.
All right, so then I'm done. That was my motion. All right.
So Jim, you seconded. Scott, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Phil, how do you vote?
Yes.
George, how do you vote?
Yes.
I vote yes. Well done. Now.
Thank you.
The third one, we do not.
The third one, is there anything else to do?
No.
And this back, Mr. Chairman? I couldn't hear.
So are we all set? Do we need to make that third one?
No, no, you have a standing motion so that the, the chair can sign. And we would like to thank the entire board, and we'd like to thank Mr. Rowley, uh, you know, very much. He's really turned things around very quickly, and we are extremely appreciative of that. And we also want to thank your staff. They have been outstanding, uh, you know, beyond, beyond the beyond, uh, well, above, you know, what, uh, what, what one can normally expect, especially given these difficult times. And I know Cory wants to speak as well to that.
Yes, thank you. Just very briefly, on behalf of PAU and Housing Assistance Corp., um, I wanted to thank the board and, and the staff, um, and the neighbors as well for, um, for bearing with all of this and for going through this process. And I thank the, the board for taking the time, particularly tonight, to have a special meeting. I know it's not easy to, to do, um, and I also just want to emphasize that, you know, this is really just the beginning and that we look forward to working with the town and the neighbors going forward. We look forward to being good neighbors and we'll certainly be in contact with folks of South Cape and others. Um, as we go forward, we'll make sure that we have a good outreach plan for construction, um, make sure that folks are aware of our schedule and that there's good communication throughout. And, um, we look forward to, uh, getting our financing soon and moving forward. So thank you very much.
Very good. I want to thank everybody also for the nice job they did, uh, especially Charlie Rowley helping out the board. And, uh, I want to thank Rosaline for her, uh, her, not sure the exact word, but, uh, going along with, uh, and agreeing to work together on this project to make it work for everybody. So thank you all.
Thank you, Jonathan. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I just have one, one last comment. I want to thank Scott Goldstein for giving one of the most comprehensive and complicated motions I've ever heard in the zoning board in my twelve years.
Yeah, I'm going to thank Ron Bondi for having something down on this, because he usually does the motion. So I apologize if I dragged it out a little longer than needed to be.
No, very good job, Scott.
Very good. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Are we have to vote adjourned and everything?
John, we have to vote to adjourn?
No, we got another, we got other business. Other business.
You have other business? Okay. I didn't, I didn't print the agenda. I didn't know there was one.
Okay, so Sharon, would you read the first and only other business?
Board to vote, vote and accept a letter from Charlie Reedy dated January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one to become a member of the zoning board. Okay, I have a, an email dated January thirteenth, and I'm going to read it, and it's from Charlie Reedy. Hi, John, just following up on our recent conversation about possible vacancy on the Z B A. I would be interested in serving if the opportunity presents itself now that I'm back living in Mashpee since last March. I graduated from Providence College in nineteen sixty-four and received my law degree from Boston College Law School in nineteen sixty-seven, where I was on law review. I was admitted to practice in Massachusetts in nineteen sixty-seven after working as a law clerk for the Justice of Superior Court in Massachusetts for a year. I began to work as a lawyer at the firm of Martin, Magnuson, McCarthy and Kenny in September of nineteen sixty-eight and was a partner there from the early seventies until my retirement in early two thousand and sixteen. My prime focus during my legal career was a trial lawyer defending doctors and healthcare providers. In that capacity, I had to learn to deal with many difficult situations in attempt to resolve them. My wife and I bought our first vacation home in New Seabury in the late eighties, nineteen eighties, and have had a home on the Cape since then. From two thousand and five to two thousand and nineteen, we lived in Katoit. My wife died in two thousand and seventeen, and I moved back to Mashpee in two thousand and nineteen. I was a member of the Board of Managers at New Seabury for a number of years and over my life have served on any number of different boards and organizations. I do want to remain active and involved in my community and have more than enough time to do so. I have been a full-time resident of Mashpee and Katoit since two thousand and five and do not travel south when the weather gets cold. I look forward to the opportunity to give some service back to the community, the community I enjoy. If anyone needs to contact me to obtain any additional information, my address is seventeen Windsor Point, Mashpee, and my cell is, I won't say it, my email address is also there, Charlie Reedy.
Okay. Uh, I've known Charlie for a long time. He's a very smart, a good guy, and he really knows what he's talking about, so I can vouch for him. And I think a couple of other people on this board know him that might want to comment.
Yeah, I've, I've known Charlie for quite a number of years. He was a great lawyer and, uh, he'd be a great addition to our board.
Is that the Charlie that I know from the, uh, meetings that we used to have before COVID? Oh, what a wonderful guy. What a wonderful guy.
George, I believe you know him.
Charlie's outstanding. I think the world of Charlie. I haven't known him that year, that long, probably, uh, five or six years, but he's just a wonderful man, uh, very passionate person, very, uh, got a, got a great heart, and, uh, I think he'd be a fabulous addition to the team, uh, or to the board. And he is, uh, from my point of view, just a terrific, smart, smart man.
Okay. Um, any other comments before I have, maybe Bill can make a motion to accept his letter and, uh, vote on it?
Yeah, I can make a motion that we accept Ch- uh, Charlie Reedy's, uh, letter of, uh, uh, interest in joining the board. I think the next step, it goes in front of the selectmen, if I'm not incorrect.
So we have to recommend.
Second that.
So we, we need a, a motion to recommend, and then we vote on it.
And I make the motion that we recommend Charlie Reedy be added to the, uh, zoning board of appeals.
And I second that.
Okay, so Jim seconds it. Uh, let's see, Sharon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Uh, Jim Gould?
Yes.
And Jim Raifah?
He's still mute.
I, I read his left. He said yes.
I know he did.
And it didn't matter. It's five to one.
And I say yes. So that's, that's all set. He, he's going to be a great addition.
No, I think he's great.
Very, very smart guy.
And a turn, and a turn, having an attorney is going to be, it's going to be great to have an attorney on the board.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, so I don't have any additional topics with, uh, okay, let's see, uh, Jim Raifah, can you hear us now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Jim Gould, would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, all right.
I second that.
Say aye.
Aye.